I'm gonna go ahead and call the special meeting of the Cordera Town Council, this is May 17th, to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Mangan.
Here.
Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Here.
And Mayor Casissa.
Here.
Thank you.
Just one thing to note before we get started, that we have changed the format in which we're now doing appointments or interviews for commissions, boards, and also committees. Prior to this, it was just basically two council members, and deliberations were kind of done under closed doors. We're changing that for more transparency. Interviews going forward will be in front of the full town council. We'll have standard questions which are noted on the agenda. Time is also noted on the agenda for an opening, closing statement, and also for the three questions. And then we've assigned times to people that have applied for various positions. And our deliberations will be in public also, again, for full transparency. So with that, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, and this is more specific to the interview of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee applicants interview process. We have nobody here by the public, by the way, just to note in person. So I believe Rebecca, we got one email in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Casissa. Yes, we received one emailed public comment. Still waiting for the timer to join the meeting. But this is brief, so I will just begin reading it. It's from Karen Gebosi, who states, "Cordera Town Council. I'm concerned that the experience, interests, and qualifications described by the six applicants is strongly slanted toward bicycle riding and barely shows any concerns for pedestrians. I understand the enthusiasm the bicycle-riding public has for bicycling, however, this should not outweigh the most important concerns and interests of the pedestrians of our town. As an occasional pedestrian, I can tell when I encounter bicyclists who are misusing our sidewalks and other pedestrian thoroughfares, that bicyclists often consider pedestrians to be a nuisance that are getting in the way of them speeding along sidewalks or zipping through a mall or other shopping area. Considering the aging demographics of Cordera and Marin County, the number of its residents that will choose, that will not choose bicycling over walking increases every day. I urge the council to make every effort to change the balance and orientation of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee by selecting committee members that more thoughtfully and equally represent the concerns of our pedestrian residents. It is essential that every person selected for the committee is fully committed to all bicyclists complying with all of the rules and regulations that apply to them when they take their bicycle vehicles to our roads and thoroughfares. I hope the council selects people for this committee who will bring the same commitment and enthusiasm to matters affecting pedestrians as they bring to the bicycle issues that are near and dear to them personally. I'd also like the committee to change its name to Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee. Let's put pedestrians first, but that's probably more than bicycling enthusiasts can embrace. Thank you for your consideration, Karen Gebosi."
Thank you. And with that, I don't see any hands raised. I don't believe we received any more emails in.
We did not receive any additional emails.
Thank you. So with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. One other thing to note also is that any of the applicants did have full access to staff for any questions or informations that they wanted. So just disclose that also. So with that, we'll go ahead and move to the interviews. And Rebecca has a timer up, and can you bring, is Kirby on? Yeah, if you can bring Kirby over.
Okay, I will bring Kirby Bartlett over as a panelist. And while we are doing that, I need to get the timer set up with the timers.
Hey Kirby, if you can just hold on for a minute while Rebecca sets up the timer.
Sure.
Thanks. This is the tech part of the meeting.
Okay.
Be good.
Okay, I think it's working. So Kirby, your two minutes will start when you begin speaking. Actually, the mayor, Mayor Casissa, were you going to read the first question?
No, go ahead. You have two minutes for an opening. We'll give you two minutes. There's two minutes for an opening statement, so why don't you go ahead and take it off?
All right. And I really appreciate that letter or email that was sent in. You'll hear, you'll figure out why in a second, because a quick summary about me. My wife and I have lived in Cordera for 25 years, where we raised our two children who are now adults. I'm an avid bike rider and a runner. I've been a member of B-PAC for nine years. I've been a member of the Marin County Bicycle Coalition for about 20 years, and I currently ride about 15 to 25 miles per week. But more importantly, relative to the email that was just sent, I have been a member of Tamalpa Runners Club for about 10 years. I routinely run in Cordera and the trails above. I run about 16 miles per week. Sidewalks, steps, and trails. I make sure pedestrian is part of B-PAC. I organized the first-ever East Cordera Bike to School Day, which has, which became a tradition. Before the school, Cove School opened, these semi-annual events had an average of about 125 students riding bicycles from east Cordera to Neil Cummins and Hall. Subsequent events over six years expanded across Cordera and Larksburg and neighboring schools. One of my favorite memories is seeing a sea of bicycles overflowing the bike racks at the schools, but the biggest reward was seeing students make a habit of riding to school. Still gets me choked up today. That's it.
All right, thank you. Rebecca, if you can say, thank you. Okay, these are your three questions. Now you'll get two minutes for each question. The first one, what is about the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee that interests you? And what quality, expert experience, and expertise would you bring to the committee? What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
I'm passionate about making bicycle and pedestrian transportation safe and practical mode of transportation. I see B-PAC as a means to help make those improvements. I've always enjoyed running and biking, but my real passion started when my kids entered public school many years ago. You see, I grew up in a town very similar to Cordera, and I rode my bike everywhere. I mean, everywhere. It was my primary means of transportation until I learned to drive. My parents didn't drive me anywhere. I drove my, rode myself to baseball practice. I looped my baseball glove in the handlebars and rode with my cleats all the way to the practices and games. It taught me about independence and responsibility, the importance of a bike lock. Yes, my bike was stolen, and a bike light in case it got dark. When my kids started going to school, I wondered, here in Marin, why are we driving them everywhere? Why don't they ride their bikes to school? There were two basic answers. From a parent's perspective, the idea of riding my child, them riding a bike from east Cordera across the freeway to Neil Cummins or Hall scared me to death. Also, from the kid's perspective, no one was doing it, so they didn't want to do it. So I asked my children, if a whole bunch of your friends did this, would you want to do it too? And that's how the East Cordera Bike to School Day started. I got principals and superintendents to act as crossing guards at the scariest intersections, and yes, the scariest ones are the Warnham Undercrossings. We had police, bicycle, and motorcycle escorts. This event lasted for six years, fall and spring, until the Cove School opened. My kids now live elsewhere, but my passion for biking and pedestrian safety remains, which is why I want to continue as a member of B-PAC. And my strength to close out the question, execution, seeing things through to completion.
Thank you. A second question. Describe your problem-solving style and strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision-making in a group setting.
In my career as chief operating officer of venture capital firm, where I routinely need to manage through challenges, I've learned this firsthand. With disagreements in a public setting, the critical parts of a solution are, one, listening, truly listening. Two, restating the person's views, and in doing so, verbally acknowledging the portions where you agree. Once you have a framework of things you can agree upon, it's much easier to tease out the areas of disagreement and then have a civil discussion. And my example of this actually occurred within B-PAC. When I took the bold position of being the only B-PAC member against posting permanent signs around town reminding drivers about the three-foot law, which requires drivers to give three feet of clearance when passing bicycles. This was not a popular position to take, especially when I was sitting next to Bob Avasio. Makes me laugh. It was just sad, right? Because he was recovering from a serious bike accident. He had been hit by a car, right? So I'm sitting right next to him saying this, I don't like this idea. But their logic was permanent signs, for permanent signs was, it's a good law, therefore, we should have a sign for it. Everyone was in favor, except me. So I started my case by stating, I like this three-foot law. It's, I think it's a good law, too. I had heard them. We agreed on this. With that addressed, we could now talk about signs, which I pointed out was really about public education. This three-foot, while-passing sign informs the general public about a law that is applicable on all roads in California. In contrast to other road signs like stop, yield, merge, no U-turn, this three-foot sign is, or message is not location-specific. It's really about a public service announcement. So with that issue framed, it was really about what law should we advertise, and how do we advertise these laws? Now, our final solution was temporary signs with different messages that could be rotated throughout the committee.
Thanks. And the final question is, what, I'm gonna tater down on B-PAC instead of trying to say all the words. What challenges do you see the B-PAC facing in the next several years?
Is it B-PAC or the P-BAC? Cordera has some major automobile arteries that will always represent a challenge for bikes and pedestrians. Highway 101 bisects the town, leaving only two routes to cross by bike or foot. And both have serious safety concerns that cars are also, as cars are also driving these crossroads. Crossing 101 is probably the biggest long-term challenge for the town in terms of bicycle and pedestrian travel. Various pedestrian over crossings have been proposed. Look, this is, this is a major challenge, one we should all think about. Tamalpais Drive, this is a major auto and bike route with lots of pedestrians trying to cross safely to get to the parks, schools, and shopping. The recent repaving and striping has helped, but the sheer amount of traffic on this road will always make it a concern. Magnolia and Tamal Vista, similar issues as Tamalpais Drive. These are major auto and biking arteries with pedestrian crossing concerns. Paradise Drive, the recent improvements look great, and I'm looking forward to more. Paradise Loop is a very popular bike ride, and they ride in droves on the weekends. The Alto Tunnel, opening this tunnel may be a pipe dream, but it is a beautiful pipe dream. Sender Marker Trail, some access points to this trail from Cordera could use some improvements, which we have discussed in B-PAC previously. Casa Buena and Meadow Sweet Drive. Let's not forget this neighborhood. Biking and pedestrian improvements have been requested by local residents for a long time at B-PAC meetings. And last, a pedestrian issue. Christmas Tree Hill, don't forget about the steps. Yes, I routinely run to the top of Summit Drive and then along Cordera Ridge Fire Road. The steps in this neighborhood are essential, especially in the case of a fire, and some are in serious need of repair, especially near the top.
All right, thank you. And we'll give you one minute for a closing statement.
I hear five key points to remember. I am an avid runner, runner. You haven't heard that yet. And member of Tamalpa Running Club. B-PAC is sometimes accused of being not, they are, we are accused of being solely focused on bike issues, as we heard beginning, and not caring about pedestrians. When this occurs, I respond to the audience by noting that I am a runner and pedestrian. I'm a longtime East Cordera resident, living on the east side of 101. Brings a unique perspective to make sure all Cordera residents are being represented. All right, shout out to my son. He's a civil engineer. And one of his summer internships was working at a local intersection. I understand, at the end of the day, B-PAC's success will be at the hands of a civil engineer. And finally, I'm the only B-PAC applicant that organized and motivated hundreds of local students to ride their bikes to school. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. We appreciate it. With that, Rebecca, can you bring over Lauren, and I'm gonna have Vice Mayor Lee do the questions on this one. We're gonna trade off.
Okay. Thank you. And while I am bringing Lauren over as a panelist, I just wanted to let our two councilmembers joining via Zoom know that I changed the view to speaker view. I don't know if that's more helpful or less helpful than gallery view. Maybe you could let me know what, if that's what you're seeing. I thought it would be good to focus on the applicant speaking. Does that work for councilmembers? Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, you should be, there you are. You shared your camera. All right, you're in, and I can start the timer when the councilmember asks the first question.
Hi Lauren, thanks for coming to us today, interviewing. So we'll start with the opening statement. You have two minutes to speak about why you've applied to be part of the P-BAC.
Sure. Thank you for having me today. I'm really excited to be considered for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I live in Cordera with my wife and three-year-old daughter. We live on Meadow Sweet Drive behind Marin Joe Street. I grew up in this area. I was born and raised in San Francisco and moved to San Anselmo during high school. And during those early years of high school, before I had a car and could drive, I definitely experienced the challenges of getting around to see my friends and, you know, want to make changes to that. After leaving college and spending some time abroad, I returned to the Bay Area 10 years ago, first to San Francisco, and then to Cordera two years ago. In Cordera, we choose to have one car. We try to leverage other forms of transportation when we can. Three times a week, I take our daughter to and from daycare when my wife needs to use her car for commuting to work. You know, we love walking and wish we could walk more. Places like Town Center, the library, and the park are only about a 15-minute walk away. But walking there is pretty stressful on the street with a three-year-old toddler. There's no sidewalks, and there's a lot of blind curves on Meadow Sweet. Last year, we bought a bike for my wife. She hasn't ridden bicycles since childhood. And I hope that we could use it to get around, run errands, get groceries, go to dinner, but after several attempts, you know, she gave up. She didn't feel safe riding on Tamalpais or other roads that didn't have dedicated or physical bike, you know, infrastructure. And so we kind of relegated to using multi-use bike pass, but that kind of defeated the purpose of using it to get around, because we had to load our bikes on to our car first. This made me realize that my confidence on a bike was kind of an exception more than the rule. I've been biking to and from work in college for the better part of 15 years, and most hadn't. So I want to make Cordera a place that people of all ages and abilities can get around by foot. I think we have an incredible opportunity. The weather is fantastic. The terrain is mild, and I really enjoy the freedom and want to share that with everyone.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll, we'll move to the three questions. You'll have two minutes for each one of these questions. Number one, what is it about the B-PAC committee that interests you, and what qualities, experiences, and expertise would you bring to the committee? And what do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Yeah, thanks for asking. So I'm very passionate and care a lot about bicycling and pedestrian infrastructure. Like I said, I want to make it a, you know, a practical mode of transportation for everyone. I believe it should be that, not just a recreation, bicycling shouldn't just be a recreational sport. You know, so beyond kind of having a lot of experience in bicycling and obviously walking. I've been biking to and from work in college for the last 15 years. You know, living in San Francisco and formerly in Taipei really opened my eyes to, you know, being able to walk around and the joys that that has as well. And I know that Cordera is not those places. We don't, we're not the same, don't have the same density of that, but I still think there's a lot of great potential. Professionally, I have 10 years of experience as a product manager at a software company, where we work with designers to build products that our customers want to use. So I've learned how to talk to customers, to draw out insights, to understand their needs, and combine that with quantitative data to make decisions, to provide, you know, user experiences that they really enjoy. I know that I am not my, the customer. I'm not the average Cordera resident, but so I want to learn more about their needs and develop and deliver, help, help deliver bike infrastructure that meets their needs.
Okay. So we'll move on to question number two. Describe your problem-solving style, strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision-making in a group setting.
Yeah, I think in my experience, most differences with making difficult decisions, especially in group settings, often come down to difference in understanding of either kind of not having a shared understanding or perspective, or not being aligned on kind of the goals or principles. So I think the first thing that I like to do is to kind of take an inventory and a recap of what is it, the information that we know, and what do we have? And make sure that we all understand it, and we agree that it is in fact true, separating what is fact versus hypothesis. And then aligning on the goal, like figuring out what is the goal, or what is the decision we're trying to make? And what are the goals for this project or this committee or this meeting, this agenda today? And then try to figure out, you know, this is something we kind of spend time on. Early on, like, what are the principles that we abide by? What are the things that we really care about? What are the things that guide our decisions? And those types of principles sort of endure and help us make decisions. And so I think when you have a shared context and have alignment on goals and principles, it becomes much easier to identify the areas where there's differences. Sometimes it also, also really helps to just to truly understand, try to identify what is someone's biggest concern, or worst-case scenario, and try to kind of talk through what that looks like and kind of go through this exercise of five whys to really understand that root cause. Keep asking why until you kind of get to a root cause. Lastly, you know, in my industry, we do a lot of set, you know, creating an hypothesis, testing and learning. We don't know everything, and the only way to do that is to test something, try it and learn. And I think that taking that approach can, you know, can be really helpful, because it's much easier to get buy-in for a small test and then to, to get, you know, qualitative and quantitative data, quantitative data, to either prove or disprove this hypothesis before kind of rolling this solution out more broadly.
Okay, thank you. Question number three. What challenges do you see the P-BAC Pedestrian Advisory Committee facing in the next several years?
Yeah, I'm aware of the kind of the plan and mandate for Cordera to build, I think, 700 housing units over the next decade. My understanding, that's about a 20% increase from, from where we are today. So I think that's, that's quite a bit. And I think there's a big challenge, or really an opportunity ahead, to make sure that those housing units are built in places with quality bike and pedestrian infrastructure, so that residents who live there have, you know, compelling alternatives other than automobiles to do their everyday errands. I think the second thing is, I see e-bikes becoming more accessible. On Meadow Street, I see pretty young kids actually riding e-bikes up and down. It looks like they're going to school. I think they're, they're getting cheaper, and they're increasing in range. And so I think we're seeing the ability for people who may be able to take longer trips on e-bikes than they would before, and be a more compelling option for commuting rather than just recreation. E-bikes also, you know, lower the barrier for people who maybe have just more limited kind of stamina, so people who are older or younger. And so I feel like there's just a great opportunity to, to provide this transportation option, but obviously, we need the bike infrastructure to make the users of that feel safe and comfortable to be able to make those things. And go with, with longer sort of kind of trips, I think it becomes really important to make sure we have really good connections with neighboring towns, such that people can get across multiple towns to get where they're going, not just focus on, you know, trips within Cordera proper.
Okay, great. Thank you.
One minute for closing statement.
One minute for closing statement.
So as you can see, I'm really passionate about these issues. I have a lot of, you know, personal experience that really drives and fuels that passion. I like to think of myself as a problem solver, a very analytical person that can break down problems and come up with solutions that solve them. And yeah, I just want to thank, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and present myself.
Great. Thank you, Lauren.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Rebecca, can you bring Cheryl over, please?
Thank you. And I will move Lauren back to the attendee side. I will now bring Cheryl over. Cheryl, you're being promoted to panelist.
Cheryl, can you hear us? Cheryl, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thanks. We'll go ahead and give you two minutes for an opening statement. Rebecca will start the timer when you start.
Okay. Well, thank you for this opportunity to talk about our community and share my vision for biking and walking in Cordera. I think biking and walking are much more than just getting to a place. It's, it's about more than transportation. It's about more than recreation. It's really about a way to be connected, connected to a place, to Cordera, the the wind, the smelling, the marsh, feeling the hills and the grades that we encounter as we walk and bike. And it's about being connected to each other, too, because when I ride, very often I meet someone I know, and we can stop and talk and chat. And you can't do that in a car. And I really think this is an important part of our life. I know when my, when my partner Vicky walks, she's a real dog lover. I think she knows every dog in Cordera, at least every dog that walks. So this is really a way that holds us together as a community. And I think it's important, and certainly during the pandemic, we found what, what not being, not being able to gather how that impacted us. And we need to think of biking and walking as part of the glue that holds us together as a community. And I'd like to see with, I think our town has done a lot to enhance and make it easier to bike and walk. But I'd like to see us do even more, so that it's really the easy choice and the first choice people will make when they want to go to Town Center or the Village.
Thanks, Cheryl. And then we'll give you two minutes each for the next three questions. The first one is, what is it about the B-PAC that interests you, and what qualities, experience, and expertise would you bring to the committee? And what do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Okay. As I said, I'd like to see biking and walking a viable choice for people of all ages. We have a, a good part of our population is, well, everyone is aging, but some of us are farther along, including myself. People over 65, about one-fifth of people over 65 don't drive. So we need to accommodate that, because they're still part of our community. And if we don't accommodate that, we find that they make fewer doctor's appointments, fewer shopping trips, they're more isolated, and, you know, there's a cascade of implications of that. And also for our children. I think learning to bike as a kid, which I did, I was like Kirby. I biked every place and walked, too. I could walk to school about a block and a half where I lived when I grew up in San Jose. And I learned a lot of independence and a lot about self-reliance. So I think we're really giving our kids a lifelong gift when we give them the gift of making, having that choice to bike safely in our community. We have, we have a ways to go, because although we've done a lot here in town, as Lauren mentioned about his wife tried biking and didn't find it feeling safe, about half of men and women say they don't want to share the road with, with cars. That means bike lanes really don't serve those people. So we need to figure out ways to provide accommodation to that. And I think we can find parallel residential routes that are off the main streets, off Tamalpais, off Paradise, off Tamal Vista, but run essentially parallel, so people can get to the same destination and serve half of the population that doesn't want to be on streets with cars.
Thanks, Cheryl. That's, that's the two minutes on that question. I'm gonna ask you the next question.
Okay.
Describe your problem-solving style, strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision-making in a group setting.
Okay. I, when I lived in Chicago, I served as a volunteer mediator for misdemeanor court, and I found that the solutions that came out of those situations, they had to be really crafted by the participants, by the two parties. So I had to do a lot of listening, asking questions, and doing a lot of listening. And sometimes people didn't even want to be in the same room together. And in another case, I had, where I couldn't, their accents were so thick, I could not understand them, but I asked the questions. They talked to each other, and we did come to a resolution. So basically, ask, listening, asking questions, and realizing that with the proper approach, people sometimes dig into a position. But if you ask the right questions, you can help them under, come to an understanding of what their interests are, which may be very different from their, from their initial position. And a good resolution depends on serving their interests. And I think we have emerging challenges here in in Corder Madera with e-bikes has been mentioned. I think integrating e-bikes on our pedestrian passes is a major challenge that's emerging. Also, as we have inflation and higher gas prices, it's really incumbent of for us to do work as quickly as possible to make transportation economical. And I think biking and walking is certainly an option for folks. I think I bring to a table a unique vision because I have, I bike, I walk, I have a push scooter, which I use often with the air gardens. I am a licensed league certified instructor for biking, which I've instructed through MCBC.
Cheryl, I'm sorry, that's the two minutes on that question. I'll give you the last question, which is what challenges do you see the B-PAC facing in the next several years?
Oh, okay. Well, I started on that mentioning integrating e-bikes and our pedestrians on our bike paths. And some of the things that Kirby mentioned, he had a nice list, I think, of of problems with one-on-one splitting our community and getting safer crossings at Tamalpais and at Warham. We really need to do that to help integrate our community. And the the middle suite neighborhood is underserved. There's very little sidewalking there. B-PAC has discussed this. I really would like to see that project, see that through so that I think it'll really bring that neighborhood more into Corder Madera. You know, the B-PAC is a really important forum to give feedback to our hardworking public works people and the contractors that that assist them. And I think I add a unique and valuable voice. I have been working with the age-friendly task force and identifying the benches and fountains and restrooms, public restrooms in town. And I've talked with Ashley and Rick in the rec department. And we're hope, we're going to put a map together so to encourage people to be walking in Corder Madera. And I really look forward to seeing that project through too. So I hope to serve again on the B-PAC.
Sure. And then the last one is we'll give you one minute for a closing statement.
Oh, I thought that was the closing statement.
You were close. We can get, we'll give you the one minute.
Well, let's see. You know, Corder Madera, we we really benefit from the old railroad rideaways that we have. And I think we're on the cusp, we can really brand ourselves as a bicycle and pedestrian friendly community. And people want that now, and I think that the town should look into that.
All right.
And I'd be willing to to put some energy into it.
Thanks, Cheryl. We appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Rebecca, if you can bring over Carl, and I'm going to turn the questions over to Vice Mayor Lee.
And Cheryl, I will be moving you over back to the attendee side. And Carl, I will bring you over to panelist.
Hey, can you hear me?
Hi, Carl. Yeah, we can hear you. All right, Carl. Well, thank you for joining us today. We're going to start with an opening statement. So you have two minutes to tell us why you're interested in applying to the B-PAC.
I'm sure. Thanks for the opportunity, folks. Carl Spursum, I live in Madera Gardens. Kirby, I got you beat. I've been here for 34 years. So pretty happy about that. What what really gets me interested in this? I have two kids. They're grown, went to Neil Commons Hall, Redwood. Great. I really enjoyed it. In Madera Gardens where I live, there's been a significant turnover in homes from original owners, elderly owners moved on, or homes have been inherited and sold. The amount of trips through my neighborhood, and I'm on a four-way stop, has, I don't know, it's up multiple numbers. It staggers me when I look outside, how many kids and families and cars are going back and forth. I walk out to get my newspaper and four or five cars will go by when mostly we haven't seen any cars. So it's really, it's really a concern of mine how the demographics in the town have changed. And the schools are such an attraction to folks moving out of the city. So a lot of my interests are really in the pedestrian side. You know, bicycles for sure, but pedestrians just scares me how, you know, the traffic going through the towns, the bike paths and the crosswalks and such. It's the amount of traffic going through there. I just fear someone's going to get run over in my neighborhood. And it's just going to kill me to watch. So that's really kind of my sense is just really dealing with the demographical change in town, the number of new kids, families, a lot more cars, a lot more people just on trails, on the streets and everything else. So that's my my interest is somehow kind of come to grips. But how do we deal with this, these changes and growth in our town?
Okay, so now we're going to kick off three questions. You'll have two minutes for each one. Question number one, what is about the B-PAC advisory committee that interests you? And what qualities and experience and expertise would you bring to the committee? And what do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Yeah, so I'll parrot things other folks have said real quick, but Kirby, I'm like you. I ride through the town up and down the hills. You know, repeatedly, I walk the hills and the steps. I love when I find when there's one that actually has a date in it somewhere in the late 1800s. You know, I just think the town is really special with all of that. And that's, you know, I want to keep maintain that. It also kind of supports Karen's comments early up earlier that pedestrian concerns, I think, do need to be a bit more of a focus because of the changes I've been talking about. As far as kind of how we would participate in a committee, I like to keep discussions focused. I don't like repetitive, you know, commentary and such. I respect people's time. I want to be efficient because I think that's important for everybody. And you know, I'm kind of a consensus builder a little bit. I'll talk about that in the next question and such. But I think with qualities or say, the qualities I have to be part of the committee, I'm already on it. And I think it's interesting to be in that committee and sit with with Todd and the finance lady, pardon me, to really look at how these will be budgeted. And can they be paid for? And how will they be paid for? And how will, what's the timeframe that these projects can actually get done? Our engineering staff is quite frankly overworked. The list of projects is long. And we just don't have enough engineers and such to get everything done as quickly as people want. So I think prioritizing projects is is positive. And my weakness is I'm very intolerant of bad drivers and disrespectful bikers. So if anything, I need to be more careful about that.
Thank you. Number two, describe your problem-solving style and strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision-making in a group setting.
I'm basically a person in search of consensus, as I mentioned. I think developing solutions is often hampered by a lack of information or misunderstanding of the issues at hand. So, you know, that's probably my biggest focus is just make sure the information that we're dealing with, that everybody understands it. I don't feel I need to guide the discussions, but I will certainly kind of raise my hand when I think we're going a little bit off track and try and stay with the issues that are on the table at the time. And I respect people's comments and I just feel that, you know, kind of my participation in these things are really just to, you know, keep keep conversations focused. Make sure we're dealing with all the information that we all, and we have a complete understanding of what the discussion is involving. I'll leave it there.
Okay, all right. So moving to question number three. What challenges do you see for the B-PAC? And what will it face in the next several years?
What I thought about this, it's pretty obvious work patterns have changed a lot in town. And I don't think they're going to go back to where everyone's filling the ferry parking lot, which is surprisingly not filled these days. And they're going to stay home. And that again has increased greatly, the number of trips around town and such. I think online shopping is leading to a trend of Amazon trucks routinely in our neighborhoods. They double park, then they don't know where they're going. The law can kind of make wrong turns or try and do U-turns where they shouldn't. And I think that whole trend is not going to stop. We've got all kinds of food delivery services. We just have a lot of delivery going on in town. I think we got to figure out some way to manage that or I'd have to think about how to do that, but just raise awareness of, you know, this kind of traffic and that we're just not used to. I mean, our world's changing and this, this is the kind of activities we're just going to see more and more of. The other thing I I think a lot about and I experience a lot, which is a little frustrating. We get these very large biking groups coming out of San Francisco and they they come and they will write through Magnolia, they'll up and down Camino Alto. They'll stop at, you know, Equator Coffee in Groves, but then they'll ride, you know, three, four breast all the way down Magnolia, all the way to Ross. And it just, I, we got to figure out a way to handle that. We share the road, but sharing the road means you share the road. And riding for breast when there's a bike path to your right, like there is on Magnolia, past Bonner Road and such. I, it bothers me. There's kind of a bit of a lack of respect. And they really don't stop at stop signs and they're always chatting, so they're not really looking around. Quickly, the other stuff that I think is important was mentioned. There's a lot of electronic modes of transportation going on, single wheels, electric skateboards, no respect for speed and walking standard market trail right now. It's take your life in your own hands sometimes.
Okay, so you're you're going to have one minute for a closing statement?
I guess my closing statement is we've got good people on the committee. I'm interested in being on it. We've heard very great comments from incumbents. I'm fully supportive of them remaining on the committee. I just have interest if if people feel I have something to bring to the table, I'd love to be part of it. I guess I'm saying I'm not here to dislodge anybody. I think you guys have been doing a great job. I have my concerns. I can certainly express them in other ways. And I certainly am involved in the town and the finance committee and the sales tax override committee and and such oversight committee. So I just thought this is something I'm passionate about, the hiking and biking I do around town and the concerns I have with, you know, with potential incidents, people getting hurt or killed and such. That just, that's in my mind every day I walk out the front door of my house.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carl. I will move you back to the attendee side now.
And if you can bring over Tom.
Tom, you're being promoted to panelist now.
Tom, can you hear us? There you are.
I can hear you. I think I just got tuned in.
No problem. We're going to go ahead and give you two minutes for an opening statement. And Rebecca has the timer set up so you can judge the time.
Okay, great. Yeah, I've gone from Zoom call to Zoom call to Zoom call today. So anyway, I appreciate just being involved. I've been on the B-PAC now for, I think, four or five years. And it's been a really an interesting process for me. It gets me more tuned in to what is going on around the town and to be able to have access to, you know, exactly, you know, what's happening and what the town feels is important has been, has been really fun for me. I recently, this last year, started volunteering to help out as a Redwood High School mountain bike coach. So that's been very interesting. My son Dylan is a very avid eighth grade rider. So it's been fun riding around with the kids since November of last year. And in fact, I think this last Sunday was our our last team ride because the finals are this weekend for the high school kids. So I, I'm an avid rider. I've been on the B-PAC for a long time. I love the improvements that have happened around town. I've seen a lot of change. I've lived in Corder Madera since about 2013, I believe, maybe 2012. Prior to that, I was in Mill Valley for a couple of years and before relocating here in 2007 for a job in downtown San Francisco where I commuted for seven years on a bicycle. I lived in Colorado for 20 years. So been pretty much an avid biker my whole life. I also walk. So I love all the new pedestrian crossings that we have put in town. And there's always, you know, bits and pieces of room for improvement. So I guess I'm honored to just be here talking to you guys about possibility of continuing on.
Thanks. Then we'll give you two minutes for each of the following questions. The first one, what is it about the B-PAC that interests you? And what qualities, experience and expertise would you bring to the committee? And what do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Um, yes, some of that I kind of went over. To me, one of the main reasons why I'm interested in continuing, you know, with the B-PAC, especially after the experience that I have had is it's, it's very interesting to be part of the presentation cycle to see what's going on around town and what are the points of improvement that the the town and the various committees are focusing on. Like I said, I witnessed a lot of change and that's been good. And you see how much effort there actually is. So I think the main experience that I bring is that I am an avid cyclist and I've been riding around this area since in Corder Madera since my son was three years old, he's now 14. So and we live in East Corder Madera. So we have a lot of experience riding from East Corder Madera over towards Mount Tam. My son rides to school every day to Hall Middle School for the last three years. And some of the various improvements that have happened are big for these kids. And, you know, and the crosswalk improvements just between East Corder Madera and Redwood and Hall Middle School is is amazing because 10 years ago, it wasn't as good as it is now. And the new improvements just in front of Nugget Market are really helping the kids out. So, I mean, I think that's my main experience. I don't walk around town so much, but I observe walkers a lot because I do drive a car and ride a bike through town. So anyway, it's a, it's an honor to be part of the process.
Thanks. Second question is describe your problem-solving style strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision-making in a group setting.
Well, I'm, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I like to have an opinion and I like to hear other people's opinions and realize that it's a process. And, you know, my opinion is one opinion of many. And I think it's, it's good to hear what people are saying. It's good to voice your opinion. That's what part of being on a committee is. And, you know, your ideas don't always, you know, get executed. And that's okay because you understand there's many different processes, including, you know, how do we, how do we keep extending, you know, the the multi-use pass, pass through East Corder Madera out towards the Country Day School and and Montessori School, things like that. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot going on. I understand it's a process. You know, we have town committees and and have to raise funds both, you know, through the town and through, you know, getting government money from other state of California or federal money. So I guess I understand it's a process and I enjoy participating in the process and listening to the various opinions. And many times it is the public that steps up to say, hey, we have an observation, you know, here's a problem. How do we solve it? And then you can, over time, those things, you know, do get addressed for the most part. I have my little pet things that I would love to get a little bit instilled for a word or to actually happen. But, uh, I think that's, so problem solving, there's a lot of opinions and it, we owe it for ourselves to be on a committee to listen to other people as well as express our own opinion.
All right, thanks. And then last question is what challenges do you see the B-PAC facing in the next several years?
You know, I, there's been so many improvements. But there's always room for improvement. Um, I think the biggest challenge frankly, and I, I dug this document out, it's the connector over Route 101. Um, I pulled the old book. We had a nice big huge landscape book about, I, I, I think the biggest single challenge is what do we do with the clover leaves? And the, you know, back and forth between east and west Corder Madera over Route 101. I feel like I put my life in my hand, uh, multiple times a week. In fact, more days than not riding my bike past, especially riding towards Route, uh, 101 where there's people that want to go to San Francisco and take the fast, you know, high speed lane, you know, heading south towards San Francisco or Mill Valley. And it, it was interesting to me just reading this big fat document that we all got a couple of few years ago. I, I realized this is a Caltrans thing, but to have no marking other than one crosswalk cutting across, which I, I never do that even with my 14-year-old son or even when he was, you know, a few years younger, you know, there's, there's no marking to feel if you're a road biker or a mountain biker to have any way to cut across that other than dealing with the red light, things like that. So I think the biggest single challenge for the B-PAC and the town is how do we deal with the Route 101 overpass? And I'm very grateful for the lines that were put on there a couple of years ago because previous five to 10 years, there were no lines in the overpass, but we, there's still a couple of spots where you take your
That's your two minutes. Sorry.
Yep.
Um, and then last one, we'll give you one minute for a closing statement.
Well, I think, um, some of it, I, I've already said, it's, it's an honor to me to be a part of this committee and to, you know, listen to what's going on and to have a chance to discuss with other people, you know, on the committee and listen to the public discuss things that maybe even aren't even on the agenda. So, you know, if I were to be considered for another, you know, two-year term, you know, I would participate absolutely as much as I can. And I feel like in a lot of ways I participate on a daily basis because I run my bike at least four or five times a week throughout all these areas. And I have an eighth grader who's going into high school. And being a Redwood mountain bike coach now, um, for Dylan's eighth grade year, riding around town now with a group of kids getting from here to there is, is very interesting to even get out of my own box.
I thi- thanks. We, that's the one minute. Thanks. We appreciate it. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
And then Rebecca, if you can bring our last person, which is Henry.
I will, um, bring Todd, uh, Tom back to the attendee side and Henry, you will be joining us shortly as a panelist.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, Henry. Do you want me to do the opening statement yet or?
Yeah. Hi, Henry. Please, yeah, one minute for your opening statement.
Okay.
Oh wait, so two minutes.
Okay. Um, I was born in Corder Madera and I've been living here and biking since the nineties. Um, I really just want people to have safe passage for both bikers and pedestrian. Corder Madera is only four square miles, pretty small and compact. Uh, most of our suburban sprawl is contained by mountains and water. Uh, but we can definitely be here and bike and pedestrian infrastructure. We're in. We have great bones regarding rail trail system and our safe routes to schools. But we're at a moment of opportunity to expand our bike lanes and our pedestrian access for pretty much every archery on town. Paradise Drive, San Clemente, Temple Pius. Young, old and disabled, they deserve safe passage, whether they're on bike or foot. But in order to make that a reality, we need to install a few things like polarized bike lanes, uh, bicycle and pedestrian priority signals and raised crosswalks. You don't really see many raised crosswalks in Marin, but there's crosswalks with speed bumps built into them. Many times people walk into the bus stops and almost get hit because we don't have flashing pedestrian signals. Um, so both sides of the overpass are, are great candidates for raised crosswalks and more pedestrians. And I talked about bicycle and pedestrian priority signals. Those are buttons that bikers push before entering an intersection and it gives them a 10-second safety head start before cars enter the intersection. Tampa Pius in San Clemente is kind of that Lakeview is a prime candidate for that because when you make that, that turn onto the overpass, it's cars going 50 miles per hour. It's a really tragic to see drivers treat our streets like rag strips. So, uh, that's what I'm here for to hopefully bring some, some.
Okay, um, so now we're asked three questions. You'll have, uh, two minutes each. Question number one, what is about the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee that interests you? And what qualities, experience and expertise would you bring to the committee? What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Um, like I said before, in our town, it's roughly four square miles and 60% of all car trips in town are within a three mile radius. So it's a perfect candidate for biking and walking instead of driving. We have a lot of young parents who are foregoing car trips and using bikes and cargo bikes, electrified ones with children tow instead of driving one mile. We need to encourage young people who live in our community to add vibrancy. And, uh, another thing that people usually forget is the reason most people don't bike is they're feared for their life and they also fear for their bike being stolen. So we need a lot of protected bike parking in front of our stores and we can easily get hundreds of people out of their cars within in a matter of a year if we do that. Um, you know, I've been biking in Corder Madera for over 21 years. I don't plan to ever own a car. I bike and walk daily for a month or two. I study urban planning and traffic engineering in my spare time. Currently I've been working with the county, the leader of the 2030 housing element stakeholders committee. Um, but through my daily biking, I'm acutely aware of how dangerous our intersections are. Um, I, I understand and I've, um, studied every intersection and I, I know exactly what it needs, whether it's a raised crosswalk, a baller, a pedestrian priority signal. But yeah, my strengths definitely lie in collaborative and consensus-based discussions. I want to make sure everyone's voice is heard and their concerns are addressed.
Great. Um, so I think we'll move to the next question then, so you can elaborate on that. Describe your problem solving style and strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision making in a group setting.
Okay. I am a consensus player. Uh, I want to take the weight off of the shoulders of the public works department. They're overworked with a bunch of engineering projects. And, you know, in difficult situations, I want to hear both and do my research and analysis. Um, I'm truly invested in making Corder Madera a more livable and vibrant community. We have great weather, year-round biking and walking weather. But with infrastructure projects, I want to reach out to the community, create different plans with surveys, uh, mailers. I want to hear people's opinions on how to make Corder Madera more walkable and bikeable, while also still, you know, maintaining a certain level of car access to reduce car traffic and congestion on our materials. I, I really want to be a problem solver, amicable to everyone's concerns.
Okay, uh, so moving on to question number three. Uh, what challenges do you see the B-PAC facing in the next several years?
Our biggest challenge is our community. We haven't had a protected bike lane built in decades. I still give props to the public works for their Paradise Drive sidewalk widening and the repaving of the adjacent path. I use it on a daily basis and I, I love to see, you know, kids, adults, elders using those paths. It really makes me happy. But we have a lot of intersections that are dangerous for even the most risk tolerant bikers and pedestrians. We need to think boldly and totally for, for some of our more challenging ratted ways like, um, Tampa Pius Boulevard and San Clemente and Paradise Drive. These have a lot of conflicting interests between cars and bikers and drivers. But we also need to accommodate the disabled and elders in the community, people on electric wheelchairs. I've seen them, you know, in the gutter. It breaks my heart, uh, just because there isn't a wide enough sidewalk. Uh, but car culture has exponentially increased our societal isolation and alienation. Incentivizing walking and biking through infrastructure can bring together our fractured community.
Okay, um, so for, uh, your closing statement, you have one minute.
Okay. I hope to live long enough to see Corder Madera become a bike and pedestrian friendly town in California. Uh, painted bike lanes don't legitimately protect bikers and narrow sidewalks disincentivize walking. We must mandate connected parking in front of grocery stores, shops and beyond. We need to be bold and build that pedestrian bridge between the town center and the village to reconnect a town severed in half by Highway 101. This will require significant collaboration with Caltrans, who has historically been hostile to the needs of bikers and pedestrians. Walking and biking infrastructure will reconnect the social fabric of Corder Madera. Um, I would love to help influence a widespread car-free lifestyle. I would be honored to work with all of you and I appreciate your consideration of my application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Henry.
Thanks. With that, we conclude the interview portion, uh, of our special meeting. And I did ask Rebecca for one more piece of information because I think it's relevant. I asked her to pull the data on for the incumbents that are, uh, reapplying what their attendance record has been at, um, the B-PAC meetings.
Thank you, Mayor Kassissa. Um, oh, I wish I could show this on the screen. I, I did a tally of the previous 10 B-PAC meetings and B-PAC does meet um, only several times per year. So I went back to the April 18th, 2019 meeting. So the past 10 meetings, Kirby Bartlett had a record of, uh, nine out of 10 of those meetings he attended. Cheryl Long Janati had a record of nine of those 10 meetings she attended and Tom Nofziger had a record of four out of 10 meetings attended.
Okay, thanks. Um, so with that, I'm going to bring it back to council and we're, this is the deliberation part of the meeting. So we're looking for a recommendation. Beck, if I have this correct, we have three openings, correct? And they're two-year terms?
That's, that's correct. When the B-PAC was last extended at the end of 2020, it was extended for a five-year period and for the first time we instituted, staggered terms so that, uh, half the members, it, it consists currently of, of six, um, community representatives and one town council appointed chair. So three of the incumbents were given, uh, one-year terms and three of the incumbents were given two-year terms. So currently the incumbents interviewing were the ones who received one-year, um, terms when we implemented staggered terms.
Okay, thanks. So with that, again, we're looking for a recommendation, um, again, for, um, three people to serve a two-year term. Who would like to start us off?
I can.
Go ahead, Bob.
Um, as the chairman of the B-PAC, since it began, which I guess was nine or 10 years ago. First off, thank you to everyone who has, um, applied. Whether you're an incumbent or whether you're new, we are lucky to have so many qualified applicants and I want to thank you, uh, for your interest and the time that you have put into this. Cause this is not an easy decision. Um, so thank you first off to everyone who's applied. I did just want to talk a little bit about pedestrian, uh, issues because I think the B-PAC has actually done a pretty good job. Uh, we can always do better, of course, but of addressing, uh, pedestrian issues. The flashing crosswalks that you see all around town now came through B-PAC. We started that, one of the B-PAC members started by putting orange flags at the intersection of, uh, Tampa Pius and Chapman. And then from there they turned to flashing crosswalks and they're now in many places throughout town. And also there is a no right turn on red arrow, uh, over on Tamil Vista. That came through B-PAC as well. So I think we actually do a reasonably good job of addressing pedestrian issues and fortunately that's because we have a lot of members who are really concerned about pedestrian issues. So I just wanted to address that a little bit because I know Karen was concerned about that. My inclination with these sorts of things always, let's say from my experience from having worked on various committees for years. If you have someone who is serving, uh, and they're doing a good job on a committee, my inclination is to keep them on the committee because I have spent many times on the phone trying to get people to volunteer for town committees and serve on them. Because, and we are actually approving tonight several positions on the consent calendar where there was no extra, you know, people applying. We just had enough to do it. So if someone is working and they are contributing, my inclination is to continue working with them. And, um, while Tom's attendance has been a little bit, um, off in the past year, I know he's had some other stuff going on. All three of them have made really significant contributions. Kirby, um, has been here since day one and, you know, has been a real key component of making sure we understand the needs of the B-side and getting across from the B-side. Cheryl has been a super advocate for pedestrian stuff always, but also for, uh, our older population. In fact, she rides a bike around town and rides people around on the front of the bike. And Tom, uh, was critical in helping us with the recently completed Paradise Tribe project, which took I think seven or eight years from start to finish. I mean, which is another thing I think that's critical to keep in mind with this stuff too is, um, these projects take years to complete. I mean, I, I noticed, you know, we're almost done with the pedestrian, the over crossing on 101. Patrick Seidler and I went to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission at least 10 years ago to get that thing started. That's how long it took. And then from there we went to the Transportation Authority Marin. That was probably nine years ago. And they're just now finishing it. So you have to have a long-term timeframe. These people who serve on the committee all these years have that kind of timeframe. So, um, my inclination would be to keep, uh, Kirby, to keep Cheryl, to keep Tom for the contributions they've made and they've proven that they are, uh, will continue to do it. Um, I have the opportunity, we have the opportunity to add one more person. I would add Carl Spursum, uh, to the committee and I would do that because Carl has extensive experience working with the town. He's been on the finance committee. And Carl, I know, has actually, at his own inclination, and this was, I think, a couple of years ago, contacted me and met with me to talk about his concerns about pedestrian and bicycle issues and what his ideas were and thought. So I know he has been involved. He's also shown up at bicycle pedestrian advisory committee meetings to comment. So he is clearly, you know, interested and inclined. He knows what it's like to work with the town. So my recommendation as the chairman would be to keep the three incumbents and would be to have Carl Spursum.
Thanks. Amy, quick question. Can we add a fourth person tonight or do we have to bring it to staff? And have them make a recommendation through town, a regular town council meeting?
That, under the res, the latest resolution, um, B-PAC can be composed of five, seven or nine members. We prefer an odd number for the obvious reasons of avoiding tie votes. So you do have discretion to appoint up to nine members of the committee.
Okay. And then I'm sorry, with Carl. Okay, and then I'm sorry, with Carl, how many would that make if we added him?
Carl would be eight.
Okay.
That would make a seven. Appointed community members and one appointed town council chair.
Okay, and the town council chair has the same voting rights as the other ones?
I believe so.
Yeah, although we don't really, we vote on things, but we.
Advisory.
It's more advisory. Make recommendations.
More discussion and recommendation.
You know, make stuff that.
So if we want to add Carl, we would actually have to add a second member as well.
I don't think you have to.
Well, but to keep, if we want to keep in a odd fashion.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. I, I would like to point out though. Through the, the chair that the composition of the BPAC is. The, the ninth member was added at the request of council in 2018, should there be. One member of BPAC interested in applying to BPAC that resided outside of the town of Port Madera, but only if that person. Is an owner or management employee of a business located within the town or an employee of the Larkspur, Port Madera School District or Redwood High School.
So we're back to eight, eight, correct?
We were trying to get. The manager of town center.
Yeah.
I would still actually love to do that because they spend a ton of money and time. Bike stuff, but that was why that.
Prior to a resignation of a committee member, a few years ago, you did operate, I believe, with seven. Community members and one town council-appointed chair.
We can also bring back to council a resolution that could conform. BPAC to. However, you choose to proceed.
But is that reflective of what we do tonight? So in other words, if we wanted to add nine, can we do that tonight or does it have to go to town council that route first? I'm just trying to make sure whatever we do.
Right, officially it would be, you could also, you know, wait till the next meeting to appoint the ninth member. But, you know, I think we could, we could put the resolution on at the next, the next meeting and. You could appoint subject to the change in membership number. Or resolution.
I, I guess, Bob, I look to you, what's your thoughts on appointing a ninth person?
Um, I don't think it's necessary, but if you want to do it, I'm okay with it. I mean, we're in the advisory committee and, you know, it's. A. Very collaborative group, you know, so, you know, as long as we can keep things moving in the meetings, which we typically do, because it is a lot of time from staff. Sometimes, because we have a lot of members and it does get into more discussions.
Uh, I'm sorry, Char, Lea, yeah, Eli, go ahead. I was going to ask you, Lea, to chime in.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Since it seems like we're presently, for the moment, setting aside the candidates and discussing the actual constitution of the group. I would just want to check with staff because I know in my time on the flood control board, I believe that body was, I think it was seven people at the time. I think we went down to five after that because we were having repeated issues getting a quorum for our meetings. You know, like BPAC, that, that group didn't meet monthly. I think it met maybe every other month. But we had a hard time finding quorums and I know that at that time, at least for that group, staff's perspective was that the size of the group made it hard to get a quorum, so I just checked with staff. And see if we might foresee a similar issue here.
Thanks, Lea.
Thanks, on the composition issue, I don't have a lot to add. I think, you know, there's always an inclination when you have such good candidates to appoint as many as you can, but I do want to be mindful of. You know, making sure the group can operate effectively. So appreciate hearing Bob's thoughts on that and staff's thoughts on that.
Charles?
Yeah, so part of the reason that I'm, and, and I'm not, you know, the chair of BPAC and I know you've. Overseen it for quite some time and it's quite effective, right? So, but I also heard some new ideas and. A much different perspective that I, I personally think they're looking at technology, they're looking at how it, you know. Integrates into new infrastructure that, and the growth of the town and. So, you know, while I don't discount any of the current incumbents, it, it is that I think that there's a voice that's missing out of the three that were. Kind of uniform in their overall approach. And so that's why I'm interested in adding that. And the thing is, is it's easier to add without subtraction. So I guess that's why I'm. You know, the, not wanting to remove any of the incumbents, but also bring in a new voice. From me personally, that's.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So you're saying, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying. You're advocating that you would add two people?
Well, I, if we even add one, I, I just, I'm not on.
You wouldn't add anybody. I'm trying to figure.
No, so what I was saying is, is, well, I think Carl brings a different perspective because of the finance committee and can. Identify funding resources and understand the infrastructural impact on the overall town budget. I also very much liked the participation of Mr. Henry Faust. And his perspective on new technologies and he identified really key hotspots that aren't on everyone else's. Radar or discussion. And I think it's important to kind of hear that voice. In relationship to the other, you know, and also I feel like some of the members have. Completed recent projects or have agendas. And then also, I think, one of the things that with the three incumbents is. Many are on the east side of Port Madera and we're supposed to have a geographic distribution and understanding and so. You know, when I hear a dialogue about a very focused area, which I, I do not deny that it. It suffers from less infrastructure in the past and even still, I think that focus there would be good. I think that I heard this discussion about. New areas that I hadn't heard traditionally in the overall dialogue of the town, so.
Okay. I just have a quick question now. Isn't Henry's on the east side, correct?
Yes.
Maybe he is, but he also was speaking outside of his own backyard. So I guess that like.
I'm sorry, I guess the way I look at is Kirby's on the, if we're looking at sites, Kirby's on the east, Cheryl, I believe, is on the west, Tom is on the east. And if we added Henry, Henry would be on the east.
Okay, so, you know.
I'm just from a pure geographical standpoint, I guess things, I want to see if we can split this out. Do we want to? Do we want to add an extra person? At this point in time, or do we want to have staff come back and discuss this at a, at a separate town council meeting and just go for the three tonight?
I mean, yeah.
I, I don't need, we don't need to add an extra person. I am fine going with the three incumbents. I think that's the most important issue.
Okay.
I've got three people that I know show up, contribute and have made a difference. And they've all made, I've showed you how they've all made a difference and I would like to get the three of those appointed. I am totally comfortable doing that, moving ahead and going forward.
Okay, so if it's just, can you go ahead and make that motion then?
I will make that motion that we re-impoint the three incumbents.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion, Lea? Eli, no?
I, I support what council's doing. I, I support the idea of keeping people on who are being affected. I just want to. I just want to make a pitch for people who are new to getting involved in the community and trying to encourage that. If people feel like there's no point in applying because we always just appoint the incumbents, I think that's a loss.
Can I address that?
Go ahead.
Uh, one of the things I've learned over the years. It's not just, you, you need to appoint incumbents if they're doing a good job, as I said, because typically we are trying to get these positions filled. Secondly, one of the things you should do, I think, if you want to be on, appointed to a commission, is start to show up at the meetings and contribute at the meetings. And address things at the meetings and make your presence felt at the meeting so that people get to know you. And I think that is critical and I don't think any of the other applicants I've seen, I haven't seen them at meetings and I, I'm hesitant. To appoint someone who I don't think has ever actually been to a BPAC meeting or spoken at a BPAC meeting. I think you can relate to that.
Yeah, I definitely can. And I still, you know, when I first went on to the planning commission, I, I started attending far before even applying and then even the first time I applied, I wasn't. Accepted. And so, you know, I think that the participation and then also I, I've been vocal that I think that. The position as someone who's interested in, in those type of committees, coming from the perspective of helping the appointees. Through dialogue from the public, it's actually strategically a great position to be in, to lobby for new ideas and, and different. Tax and then, and have it reviewed by people that have successfully executed.
You're absolutely right. And they also learn how meetings work and they learn how the process works and they learn how staff works and, you know, that takes time. And I'd rather have, you know, I want people who've been through that and understand that.
Okay.
So I agree with you completely.
Thanks, thank you, thank you. So I feel like I'm in the middle here. Yeah, go ahead, Eli, and then I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Go ahead.
Sure, well, if, if you're ready to call for the vote, then, then. You can go for it, but I, I was just going to say, you know, I think participation and showing up has, has been brought up multiple times in this discussion. Um, I, I do have questions about the, the one incumbent and I, I don't recall who it was, unfortunately Rebecca will have to remind me, but I do have questions about the one incumbent. With the 40% attendance rating over the last three years. Um, and, and, you know, I definitely appreciate all three of the incumbents. Their, their absolutely concrete contributions over, you know, over their tenures. But I wonder if maybe, you know, if, if one of our incumbents has, you know, maybe things going on in their lives as we all do. And maybe doesn't have the time for this at this particular juncture. I wonder if that might be a good opportunity to actually keep two incumbents, but also make room. To bring one of these new, new folks on board, because I, I definitely do also agree with Lea's comments about the importance of, of, you know. Having opportunity for new people to get involved and also Charles' comments about bringing new ideas into the fold. So I was going to add that, but it sounds like we may already have at least three folks who, who are set, so maybe, maybe we're good to go.
Alright, thanks Eli. So with that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Thank you. I, would you repeat via the motion, please? From my record. Where did we land?
Move to appoint, reappoint the three incumbents who applied this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan.
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Yes.
And Mayor Casissa.
Yes, and I appreciate all the applicants and having more, just as important, I appreciate this discussion. Because usually we've done this in the past where there's only two councilmembers close doors. I think by doing this in this open forum, I just think it's complete transparency and I just think that it's. It just opens it up. I just think it's really great and they're healthy discussions. So I think it's all great. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and join this meeting in about 10 minutes plus or minus, we have our regular town council meeting coming up. Thanks, everybody.